If Clerk Seegrist could call the roll.
All right, trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster is absent. Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good morning, good evening.
Let the record ref-
Still at work this morning.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seegrist is calling the roll. And in attendance, Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the addition of Item C six and Item G 11. And then also another note to the trustees that Item G four remains the same, but it has some verbiage changes and there's hard copies in front of you for Item G four.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda with the amendment of adding Item C six, consideration of second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 54, Article two of the Canton Code of Ordinances to exempt certain peddlers and solicitors from the licensing requirement if participating in a township-sponsored event. And adding Item G 11, consider request to purchase ammunition.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Call for a motion to approve the minutes of June 12th, 2018.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the minutes from June 12th, 2018.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time for citizens' non-agenda items comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for an item that's not on the agenda? If you're here to speak to an item on the agenda, you can wait till that agenda item comes up and then speak if you wish at that time. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Mr. Miller?
(inaudible)
Mike, either way, Mike or Mr. Miller, eh? Okay, well, there's two of you, so.
George Miller, I have some questions. First of all, I'd like to clarify it, make sure I understand it right. The water conservative tank over on Joy Road to reduce the water rates, should I say? What did we, how did we pay for that in the beginning or want to pay for it? Not how it's paid for now, how was it meant to be paid for in the beginning when Melissa was in power here as a treasurer? You were here.
Yeah, sure.
I'll refresh your memory. At best of my recollection here, in a meeting, there's a fee on water, on your water bill for broken water mains and sewers, correct? It's right in the water bill worked in for maintenance of the system. That money, whatever it was, evidently a lot of it, nobody, it's a secret sort of, to be used on that project on Joy Road. Now, call my friendly stockbroker today. You guys floated bonds in 2016 at 5 percent, around $110 a piece, possibly 50,000 of them. They're due 2022. That's what I've been told. The second layer of them, 2016, when that plant just about got finished and online, isn't that amazing? 2016, and they come due on 2023 at 112. They floated at 5 percent, around 16,000 left. The third layer of bonds, this is what I've been told, 5 percent due, they started at 2016, they're due 2026 at 117. Then I would say that's 5, 10, 15 million dollars possibly. I'd like to know where that money went. Why are we floating bonds for that which was intended to be paid for out of that fund? And if it hasn't been touched, that fund for maintaining the sewer system and the water system, I'd like to know if it's been touched. Now, let's move forward on the roads a little bit. According to this map, you guys are going to do sealing, which is nothing but cracks in the asphalt. I'd like to know how Wayne County, they're going to take on some responsibility, and they're not doing very good on patching potholes here at all in any shape or form, not alone smoothing them out and rolling them over and packing them in. I'd like to know, and it doesn't state anything about that, what their game plan is for doing that. Okay.
George, we've exceeded three minutes now, and we do have the forum tomorrow night that you're more than welcome to come back.
Fine, I'll be here.
We can talk then.
And I appreciate it when people hear, and I understand some things, but I'm limited to three minutes, and some of them go over five and 10 minutes.
Very good, thank you, sir. Michael. Yes. If you would, sir, name and address, if you'd be so kind, you know the route.
4580 Dion Street, Canton, Michigan. Three minutes is awful quick to get in what I've got to say, but I'll make a shot. My father, who's much smarter than me, used to say if government was run efficiently, all citizens of the United States would get a check because of the wealth flowing in here. Not long back, we had a president that spent $8 trillion. That wasn't a lot of money. Eight trillion is tough to get your hands on, but that roughly works out to be about $25,000 for every citizen. Now, Solyndra was created, that bridge that just collapsed on in Florida. Couple of years ago, we had RISA. They talked about Little Johnny not being able to read. Well, they passed a tax. The problem is only 30 cents of it stayed here, 70 cents went somewhere else, and yet we're stuck with it. Now, this deal, they came up with this $3 per week on this magical house in Canton. Nobody said how much that magical house was worth, but it did say, it was in your little handout that came out the other day. Is that a $100,000 house, $200,000 house? In 20 years, that to me is kind of a stretch, because I probably won't be here in 20 years. So that means going to sign up for a tax, it's not, I'm not going to live long enough to pay off. Twice a year, I walk into Treasurer's office, I see Ms. Slavens, hand her a check, hey, we're friends, I see her in the grocery store, that's great. The problem is, if you took it for a trial basis or one or two years and say, look how well we're doing, let's go again. They had the little situation not long back where the DIA couldn't make it, the zoo couldn't make it. So once again, they came out here, and now they've got this deal with this regional transit authority that they're kind of pushing through again. We just paid a lot of money on a gas tax per gallon. I just, they had a statistic the other day on the radio that a lot of people can't come up with $400 cash, 400 bucks cash. I, to me, that's mind-boggling, but, you know, an average person carries 10 to 15 grand in a credit card bill. Anyways, that was, I just had to get that out. I think it's crazy, but anyways, that's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'd ask Clerk Seegrist, oh, nope, before we do that, Treasurer Slavens.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second. Those in favor of the motion to pay the bills again this month, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Now, we could ask Clerk Seegrist to read the consent calendar as a single item.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as amended. Item C one, resolution in support of Youth Voter Engagement Day on July 1st. Item C two, resolution to amend the inter-local agreement that created the Nankin Transit Commission to include the Charter Township of Canton. Item C three, reconsider second reading of Code of Ordinance amendments to Chapter 106 entitled Storm Water Management. Item C four, consider approval of the equipment, delivery, and installation charges related to the purchase of the replacement KIP scanner. Item C five, approval of budget adjustments for Fund 265 OCDETF. And item C six, consideration of second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 54, Article two of the Canton Code of Ordinances to exempt certain peddlers and solicitors from the licensing requirement if participating in a township-sponsored event.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item on the general calendar this evening is Item G one, consider approval of a split and combination for Aziz Estates subdivision.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the property split and combination for parcel numbers listed in your packet for Aziz Estates subdivision as shown on the attached survey dated May 21st, 2018.
In summary, the applicant proposes to split a portion of an occupied lot and convey it to the adjacent vacant lot of a family member. Aziz Estates is Zoned R3 and was developed under the cluster option permitted by ordinance. The cluster design results in lots smaller than the standard size for a specific zoning classification, remaining areas then incorporated into larger open space park areas in the development. The proposed land division yields two new lots that conforms to the minimum dimensions and do not reduce the amount of open space required by the approved plot, plant. Any land division involving a platted subdivision must be approved by the Board of Trustees, which is why we're here today. And I, do we have Mr. Sayed Jafri in the audience? He's, okay, so we have the owner present. Does the board have any questions or comments? Yes, Anne Marie.
Wondering why this wouldn't go before the Planning Commission? Isn't that usual process, or?
Yeah, it's just under the, under the state act, it only requires approval by the Township Board since it was applied, is my understanding. I can just, I'll double-check that with Jeff tomorrow and just send a response out to the board so that you understand the mechanics.
Go ahead, Stephen.
This is an existing subdivision, and it's just two homes in the subdivision works?
No, the situation is you've got an existing home here on the left, an existing home on the right, and a vacant lot in the middle. And the proposal is to take this triangular wedge of property off of Lot 33 and give it to Lot 45 so that a home can be constructed, slight larger home can be constructed on Lot number 45.
I don't remember where Aziz Estates is.
Yeah, sorry, just off of Millbrook, Millbrook Road on the east side of I-275.
Dr. Taj's neighborhood, I believe.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Okay. So no other questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item G two. Yep, very simple, guys, all set. Item G two, consider approval of preliminary planned development for Hampton Manor of Canton Assisted Living Facility.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of a minor planned development for Hampton Manor Assisted Living Facility, whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of a preliminary planned development for the Hampton Manor Assisted Living Facility located on the south side of Ford Road west of Ridge Road, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary development plan and draft development agreement, made a recommendation to approve the request as it meets the criteria for a planned development, fulfills identified needs in the community, and results in definite benefits to the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for a preliminary planned development for the Hampton Manor Assisted Living Facility proposed on tax parcel, on the tax parcels listed and part of the other tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
Hampton Manor of Canton LLC is proposing a 64-unit assisted living facility in a 59,000 square foot building on the south side of Ford Road west of Ridge. The parcel is located on east of Cremboli Nursery and extends easterly towards Ridge Road along the drain. The house on Ridge Road will be split from the property under consideration. The definite benefits include provision of a sidewalk on the north side of Ford Road, providing walkable access along Ford to Patriot Park and connecting Parkside Estates to Ridge Road, provision of a transport van for the residents, enhancement of wetland buffers by supplementing the planting and removal of debris and non-native plants, providing an over 68 percent open space exceeding the minimum 25 percent requirements for planned development, and additional parking over the minimum required for visitors. And we've got some views here. Do we have Mr. Imran, Evan Priest in the audience? Mr. Imran, if there's any questions, the comments the boards would like to make.
Just one thing I noticed, and maybe Tim can answer it. In the minutes, they said something about MDOT might reevaluate or is evaluating for a left turn at that intersection. I don't know if it's adding something to the light, are they, are they going to do another road study, or?
Yeah, so, so what's, what's being evaluated right now by MDOT is an evaluation of the intersection operations at Ford and Ridge and also in front of the National Heritage Charter Academy School. So those two signals are in close proximity to one another. As we know, during peak traffic times, there's some conflicts that occur there, so the state is looking at whether or not changing the length of the operation of those traffic signals and/or adding some left turn phases for the signal operation would help. We were, I think, informed just about a month ago that the state is still working on that study, so.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
When we talked about it in the Planning Commission, one of the items was the drainage, and I know that Commissioner Charia was concerned that if, this was supposed to improve the drainage, correct, because it's going into a detention pond, and he was concerned that if the project didn't go through or they only went halfway, would it make it worse and what would be the case if that happened? That was one of his questions. But Jeff Goulet had said that that hasn't happened in the past, but could you answer that anyways?
Right, so, so the developer has to post a bond for, for anything incomplete on the project. That's, that's normal course of action. So anything, if, if the scenario developed where all of a sudden the project stopped for some reason, the Township could be in a position to cash the bond and complete work such as drainage that might be necessary in order to make the site live or function properly until such time that another owner purchased it. I think what Jeff's comment to the Planning Commission was that hasn't happened before, which we've been fortunate that that's never been the case in Canton, so that would be the scenario, or the protection if, if something like that did happen. And my understanding, and maybe Mr. Priest could clarify or the applicant, how they're addressing the adjacent property drainage on the site when they do their development.
And are we assuring the neighbor, because there's a neighbor that was concerned, are we assuring them about this? Are we talking to them about the drainage and how it's going to improve?
I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Souls, who's a neighbor to the east. I think he's, he'll be okay. We are, our parking area that'll be up there on that side is going to be set lower than the property line, so it will catch any drainage in that vicinity, and it will be directed via the storm sewers to the detention pond at the south end of the property. So I think we talked a little bit at the Planning Commission meeting, a lot of that property now drains out to Ford Road and into that ditch that, which there is of it, and some of it overland onto the property to the east and into the wetland here on the west side. We're going to be picking up a lot of that, putting it in our system and in the pond and directing it directly to the drain, so he should see less runoff after this is built.
Seeing no other questions, those in favor of the motion in front of us, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G three, consider approval of special land use for physical rehabilitation services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, approval of a special land use for a medical clinic for physical rehabilitation services, whereas the project sponsor, Physical Rehabilitation Services, has requested special land use approval for a medical clinic at 39933 Ford Road located on the southwest corner of Ford and Lots Road, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and special land use criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval, subject to restoration of the site to the previously approved site plan, including landscaping, parking lot lighting, and addition of irrigation of the landscaped areas and provision of a gate on the trash enclosure. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for a medical clinic for physical rehabilitation services at 39933 Ford Road on the tax parcel listed, subject to restoration of the site to the previously approved site plan, including landscaping, parking lot, lighting, and addition of irrigation of the landscaped areas and provision of a gate on the trash enclosure, and any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
Mr. Beatty's in the audience, as well as Mr. McLauslin. In summary, the applicant is proposing to operate a physical rehabilitation office at this location in the building that was previously housed by Andy Pelk BMW Motorcycles. This requires a special land use for medical clinic in the corporate overlay park due to the parking limitation on the site, and office use is a perfect reuse of the previous showroom building. Are there any questions for Mr. Beatty? Go ahead, Stephen.
I saw some discussion in Planning Commission minutes about the way the traffic flow will occur, and I think, does it only go out to lots, is that right?
That's correct. The, in this typical type of use, I believe the background cited, you know, three to four patients typically at a time is going to be a very low, very low traffic generator.
Very good, thank you.
They were also going to restore the landscaping and all the lighting for the requirements too, which makes-
That's good.
-does now.
Seeing no other comments or questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item G three.
Four.
Four, thank you. Now I have to go to our paper copy of G four. Consider approval of final site plan for Phase Three of River Hill Ridge at Cherry Hill, the Ridge condominium.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of the final site plan for the Ridge Site Condominium, whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of the final site plan for the Ridge Site Condominium, Phase Three of River Hill Ridge on property located on the east side of Ridge Road between Cherry Hill Road and Plain Street, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the final site and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request as it can, as it, as it is consistent with the plan, approved plan development agreement, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for the Ridge Site Condominium on part of the tax parcel listed and part of the other tax parcel listed as proposed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
In summary, River Hill Ridge at Cherry Hill Village Site Condominium, Phase Three is the westerly part of River Hill Ridge Plan Development and is the northerly extension from Revere Street in Phase One of River Hill Ridge and connects to the dead end of Grant Street in Cherry Hill Village. Phase Three, the Ridge, includes 31 units on 8.84 acres, ranging in width from 55 feet to 70 feet. This phase includes seven lots that face directly onto Ridge Road. The design of these homes will require approval from the Historic District Commission. This will result in a feeling that you're entering the village with the homes facing Ridge as they would have historically. The other homes will have access off an internal extension of Revere Street, which ends in a cul-de-sac. These homes will match the latter phases of Cherry Hill Village per the pattern book requirements. The property on the west side of Ridge will be split into four frontage parcels at a later date with homes similar to the seven lots on the east side of Ridge. This will complete the original vision of Cherry Hill Village contemplated in the late 1990s. Are there any board questions or comments? We have Mr. Barry in the audience from TDM Holdings. Go ahead, Stephen.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
The ones, it mentioned the ones on Ridge Road have to meet other standards for historical. Does that mean they'll be different than the ones inside?
I think those will probably be more custom homes than what we're doing inside. The lots are bigger. If we throw a spec home on there, we'll, we'll change it up just to give it a different look. They're a lot wider. I thi, I think they're more than 75. I want to say they're 90-foot lots on, on Ridge.
Yeah, they look bigger. And Pat, what changed in, do you know what changed in that we needed the paper?
Language or verbiage?
Sorry, what's that?
What changed?
Attachment was the-
Yeah, the, appears in three different versions of the packet that were prepared, two of them had the correct attachments, one did not. So I think the initial one that the board got did not, so that's why you have the paper copy in front of you.
Absolute sure, you got the correct one.
Very brief, briefly, the other thing I wanted to mention, because it was a concern that the developer raised regarding Ridge Road, I think a few of you at least are aware that almost three years ago now, we had petitioned through Wayne County to the State of Michigan to change the juris, change the classification of Ridge Road here from Cherry Hill Road south for approximately three-quarters of a mile to a local road that is currently a county primary road, so that it be incorporated as part of the village, and you have more of that kind of village design, village feel, and lower speed limits down the road. And we had proposed to swap this road for a road, Sheldon Road south of Michigan Avenue, which is currently a local that we want to be a primary to service future industrial. Well, we, lo and behold, almost three years later, we're still waiting for that answer. It's been a very long process.
We're that close, we're that close.
Getting close. I hope it, I hope it comes soon, but as soon as that answer is given, then the next step, which is to evaluate the actual speed limit, which is unposted, so currently, actually, is it 55 or 40 here?
I think it's 45.
Or 45. So it's, the ideal was to reduce it ideally down to 25 like the rest of the village. So that's coming. I can't say when, but that is all in the works.
One more question, will there be sidewalks in front of those homes? Okay.
Anne Marie, are you?
No, I was going to mention the traffic there that slowed down, because I noticed we didn't have that in the minutes.
Okay, so no additional comments or questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item G five, consider approval of special land use for Supreme Detailing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of the special land use for automobile service for Supreme Detailing, whereas the project sponsor, Supreme Detailing, has requested special land use approval for automobile service at 8755 Rhonda Drive located on the west side, Rhonda Drive, south of Joy Road, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and special land use criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for automobile service for Supreme Detailing at 8755 Rhonda Drive on the tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
I believe we have Michael and Tina Hensley in the audience with us?
Yes.
Okay, Eric, hi, guys, welcome. In summary, the applicant is proposing to operate an auto detailing, equipment and equipment installation business in the industrial lease space at 8755 Rhonda Drive. This requires a special land use for automobile services. The site is more than adequate to meet the requirements for the use, and all vehicles are kept indoors. Are there any board questions, comments? Are you guys currently doing business in Canton?
Yes, we're 23 years.
Okay, so this is just a large, little larger facility for you, or a better facility?
I told you, it's the last place I've ever been.
This is the right location for your operation at this time. Very good. All right, understood. Any additional board comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations on your new spot. Item G six, consider approval of site plan for the towns at- Item G6. Consider approval of site plan for the towns at Cherry Hill Condominiums and approval of the agreement for the long-term maintenance for landscape facilities.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following revol, resolution, approval of the site plan for the towns at Cherry Hill Condominiums. Whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of the site plan for the towns at Cherry Hill Condominiums on property located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road, west of Denton Road. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the site plan and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request as it is consistent with the planned, the approved plan development agreement, now therefore be it resolved, that the board trustees of the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for the towns at Cherry Hill Condominiums on the tax parcels listed as proposed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
The whole site plan consists of 93 attached residential townhomes and 16 buildings on the 8.37 acres. Plans are consistent with the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District and planned development agreement approved by the Township Board on May 22, 2018. The project provides a transition from the commercial and office uses on the north side of Cherry Hill to the single-family site condominiums being constructed by MI Homes within the corners, located adjacent to and south of the proposed development. Wayne County also requires Canton to accept the maintenance and indemnify Wayne County for the street, street scape improvements, which is then turned over to the condominium association in the master deed. We do have representatives here, Atwell, Mr. Atwell?
I'm making a decision.
Okay, very good. Do we have any, we have a photograph of the, the building here. Are there any questions, comments?
Just what, what part of this process are we in now that, because we just saw this a meeting or two ago?
Correct. So they've been through, went through the original zoning, then the PDD application, and now they're at the site plan stage. With approval now, basically they'll be moving forward with finalizing their engineering design, getting all their permits so that they can get underway.
Very good. Thank you. Ray?
No, we actually passed this. I think one of the things we talked about was this project also did that road study there and they were going to retime the lights. Do you know the status of that at all? Because that was pretty substantial.
Yeah. Bill, bill's out this week. Did stop by to check, but we're going to have to wait till next week to find out what the status is. But he was going to communicate that to Wayne County after the last meeting that we had.
Also, are these homes, are they ADA accessible? Do they have ramps or can they be placed anywhere?
As far as ADA accessibility, I would have to check on that. I think some of them definitely will be. I don't know that all of them because of the grade changes and there might be some stairs, but I think some of them will be. We have these ranch end units on the ranches. They will probably be, honestly, I, I would have to check. I'm not sure of the exact number right now. Let us know, please.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no other questions or comments, or those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have a second motion attached to this item.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, agreement for long-term maintenance of landscape facilities for the towns at Cherry Hill Condominium. Whereas the developer, MI Homes, has applied to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for approval of streetscape and landscape elements within the Cherry Hill Road right-of-way with respect to the project known as the towns at Cherry Hill Condominium, the project. And whereas the developer's application for improvements within the right-of-way has been assigned Wayne County Review Number R18-269. And whereas the developer has entered into a planned development district agreement with the charter township of Canton, which includes the requirement for the developer and future association to provide long-term maintenance of the streetscape and landscape elements within the right-of-way at the project. And whereas the charter township of Canton hereby agrees to assume jurisdiction and accept responsibility for long-term maintenance of the streetscape and landscape improvements at the pro, project in perpetuity and now therefore be it resolved, the charter township of Canton assumes jurisdiction over and accepts responsibility for long-term maintenance of the streetscape and landscape facilities at the project pursuant to the Wayne County Review Letter, the plan, and the right-of-way construction approval issued by Wayne County. And to the extent allowed by law, the charter township of Canton hereby agrees to indemnify, save harmless, and defend Wayne County, its Department of Public Services, its officials and employees against any and all claims, suits, and judgments of every name and description arising out of the construction of the proposed streetscape and landscape facilities located within the Cherry Hill Road right-of-way adjacent to the project. This agreement to indemnify, hold harmless, and defend must not be construed as a waiver of any governmental immunity by Wayne County or the charter township of Canton, including each entity's elected and appointed officials and their respective employees as provided by statute or court decision. Further, that approval has been granted by the Township Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, authorizing the Township Supervisor to execute on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, the permits for maintenance of the streetscape and landscape facilities issued by Wayne County.
Support.
Board comments or questions? Go ahead, Stephen.
Is that typical for the Cherry Hill PDD, that kind of language?
Indeed it is. So all the parcels that have developed along Cherry Hill Road have been required to enter into this agreement, which basically says the county is not going to assume any responsibility for anything that's outside of kind of the physical roadbed. The developer and ultimately the property owner will, will assume that responsibility. We don't take that responsibility either, so we pass it on to the developer. And they would maintain and pay for those, the maintenance of those structures, whether it's sidewalks, trees, park benches, anything that's kind of in the public right-of-way, that's not part of the road, out of their HOA dues and their HOA budget.
Okay, so it's turned over to HOA once they're all sold off?
Actually, in our master deed, we've been going through with Jeff Goulet, so there's language in there that we will, and eventually the HOA will have to maintain all of it.
And I was going to not, I was going to hold my tongue, but I'm not going to. It's too bad Wayne County didn't spend 5% of the legal fees, get the rest of the cash into our roads as opposed to wasting all the time and money on lawyers for the belt suspenders and straitjacket language. Ridiculous.
That was fun to go through.
That being said, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Item G8. Consider approval of, oh, G7?
Yeah.
Consider approval to increase to a blanket order number 2018-412 for Kennedy Industries.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board increase, approve an increase of $10,000 in the blanket purchase order number 2018-412 for Kennedy Industries.
In summary, Kennedy, Kennedy Industries has provided service and maintenance to Canton sanitary sewer pumps and lift stations for many years. In recent years, Kennedy has expanded their operations to provide service to generators and provide SCADA, S-C-A-D-A monitoring, which I don't know what that means, and we'll ask Tim to tell us what that means, for our water system. There have been several events in our sewer system this year that have required Kennedy's assistance outside of the normal maintenance protocol. These additional expenses have been depleted from the existing blanket order funds, and additional funds are necessary. Public Works is requesting that the purchase order be increased by an additional 10,000 as stated. Any board questions, comments?
SCADA is supervisory control and data acquisition. It's the computer system that monitors the pumps, the generators, and then gives us feedback when those pumps and generators are not functioning properly and somebody needs to go out there and, and attend to it.
SCADA sounds a lot better than SCADA. Thank you for the clarification. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8. Consider approval of increase PO 2018-000001413 for Braco Excavating Company LLC to complete the Michigan Avenue Water Main Replacement Project.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to the PO number stated by $175,416.98 for Braco Excavating Company LLC for payment of their final invoice.
In summary, the 2017 Water System Capital Improvement Program was advertised April 2017. All the work was awarded to Braco. The project included replacement of 2,820 feet of six-inch water main along Michigan Avenue west of Beck Road and 6,000 feet of eight-inch water main with the Hampton Court and Forest Brook subdivisions. Total amount previously awarded for the project is $1,493,477, which includes all the contingency funds. The final total due to Braco was $1,668,893.98. To date, Braco has been paid $1,446,497.72. The remaining balance is in the retainage account, which is still being held. And the PO number 1413 combined is $46,979.26. This leaves $175,416.98. That needs to be added to the PO to cover the additional costs as negotiated with the contractor. This, this project's been in front of us a few times. It's been a very tricky project to get completed. Now we're trying to just clean up the bills based on the negotiations that Tim's team had with Braco. Are there any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I noticed that they didn't charge for additional labor time.
Yeah, correct. In favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G9. Consider approval to schedule show cause hearings for four properties subject to dangerous building hearing orders.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the date of August 14 at 5:30 PM for the purpose of conducting show cause hearings for four properties that failed to comply with the det, with the deadlines imposed by the dangerous buildings hearing officer in 2018.
Support.
In light of the failure to comply, the board has taken action to set a public meeting, which at, at which the property owner must be given an opportunity to show cause why the hearing officer's order should not be enforced. The hearing must occur at least 30 days after the meeting, at which the board sets the hearing and the notice of the date and time chosen shall be sent to the property owner. Following the hearing at which both property owner and the township staff will be given the opportunity to speak, the board must decide if the determination of the hearing officer should be carried out as ordered, whether the order is needed, need not be followed, or whether some other appropriate resolution to the matter. Does anybody have questions for Tim or is Josh or Tim Shop? Tim Shop?
Who does the hearing?
We, we have...
Which?
Rob Kramer.
Yes. So the, this hearing would, would occur in August before the, I think it's the 14th board meeting. We have not, we've not actually had to get to this step in the past voluntarily. We had one property last year, I believe it was, that asked to basically take it to this level. These four properties have, the owners of these four properties have refused to comply, so they're forced to go to this next stage, which is the final stage where the board has to decide whether we proceed with, with demolition and removal of these structures. And if so, building will get bids on those and then bring those back to the board if the bids individually are $10,000 or greater in the, probably be September timeframe.
If we do take on the project, the costs will be applied back to the property?
Correct. All costs associated with this process become a lien against the property owner.
Go ahead, Ann Marie.
On the one, number three, the abandoned boarded-up home, wouldn't that just to be, have, go back to the bank and have them, or is it bad enough that it needs to be torn down or?
Yeah, this one, this one in particular is pretty bad. It's not bank-owned, so it's still individually owned. So it's up to the individual to comply. If they decided to forfeit the property, ultimately it could be before a bank. So in some circumstances, although rare, you could be dealing with a bank on, on these properties.
So they've all been kept up with their taxes, so forfeiture going on?
None, none of these are in forfeiture right now.
It's just that the house isn't livable or it's not being taken care of in terms of that particular one?
Correct. Yep, that's on Yost Road, east of Sheldon Road.
No further comments or questions. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G10. Consider the purchase of modular breathing air system.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one Mako breathing air system with accessories in the amount of $44,991.01 from West Shore Fire Incorporated in Allendale, Michigan.
Second. Hey, the township solicited an invitation to bid for the Modular Breathing Air Center. The fire department did budget for this air center to replace the 20-year-old system currently being used. Now they're requesting that the board approve replacing at this time. Are there any questions for Josh or Mr. Stockline who's joined us this evening? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G11, which is, everybody has a copy of. Consider the request to purchase ammunition.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of ammunition utilizing state of Michigan contract pricing from Keisler Police Supply in the amount of $17,215.20.
Second. Hey, the police department is requesting to purchase ammunition for rifles and handguns to be used on duty and for training qualifications. Their Police Supply Incorporated has quoted the ammunition utilizing the state of Michigan contract pricing for total cost as stated. Funds for this purchase order are indeed budgeted in the 2018 operating supplies account. Any board questions, comments? Okay. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes, I believe, the formal board package. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none. Ann Marie, please.
Yeah, a couple of things. I know we've been approving a lot of high-end senior centers, and I'm wondering, I know, Josh, that we were looking at our ambulances. Are we, when we approve these, do you look at how much our ambulance services would be impacted and whether we need to start increasing them? Do we know what level we're at?
I can tell you that our run volume is up currently, particularly in EMS, about 400 runs from where we were this time last year. But we did a study two years ago where we looked at all of our senior living facilities and assisted living facilities and determined how many calls we would go on per bed, if you will, to give us an idea. I don't know that number offhand, but I'd be happy to share that with the board, the study that we did at some point. But we do keep track of that and we do keep a watchful eye on that because it does increase the call volume.
When we approve these, do we, I mean, when they come before us, do we add them in? Does Jeff get with you and add out how many beds there are, therefore how many more runs there would be, and whether we can add at any point or?
No, we're just made aware of the facility. I don't think that there's anything that we can do to prevent them from coming or, or anything within the zoning ordinance that would allow us to limit the number of beds they have. So we're made aware of that they come through and that's what we work through.
Let me help you here, Josh. You're, you're saying the right things, but let me just add a few extra words. Is Josh and Wendy are in the process of looking five-year plan. With that five-year plan, they're taking into account all the new development, which includes the senior facilities. The senior facilities numbers of beds are known. So that information can be pulled into that plan and should be pulled into that plan. Not only the senior facilities as well as new housing and where it's at physically, because every one's going to be another potential call.
I wonder if the additional property tax revenue millage for fire covers that sufficiently or are we always going to be behind on that?
Answer is no. I can tell you at the SEMCOG meetings, Michigan Township Association meetings I've attended, mayors and supervisors across aging America are concerned with this issue because there's going to be more senior citizens as a... this issue because there's going to be more senior citizens as a percentage of the population living in Michigan by the year 2035 than currently live in Florida. And that's all the projections that we've seen over and over. The nation is aging. Baby boomers are going to be need to be taken care of. Josh has got to work that into the plan.
Yeah, the only thing I could offer, I guess, is that there was a little bit of information on the one that was approved tonight in the background material, which showed you specifically for public safety, both police and fire, you could see, based on the estimated taxable value for that property, how much, how much revenue would be coming to the township in, based on the current millage for public safety.
I've gone through legal three different ways, asking for angles to assess special fees to these facilities, and we cannot. It's illegal.
Maybe when they come before us, how we're looking at traffic, and some of them are actually supplying traffic reports when they give their developments, maybe we could even do a safety assessment to see if we're looking at it getting closer to our limit. Maybe that's something we could look at also.
No, we're holding on to four acres or so up on Michigan Avenue for another fire station. We're doing the rebuild currently of Station one, three, two, I'm sorry, two, we're rebuilding. And there's, we're looking ahead, and there's going to be a significant challenge presented to the board in the future on how we're going to not only build these facilities, but also staff them. It's not going to be cheap.
Now, also, another thing is, we had asked at the planning commission, when we were looking at the latest development here, a lot of these are high-end. Do we have any way of knowing, you know, we know what the median income level is of Canton, and they don't have a lot of Medicare beds. They say they have to have private pay. And if you have a medium or a lower-income person going into a facility like this, they might not be able to afford them, and we might not be able to accommodate our own residents. So are we, do we have that information in terms of how many, how old our seniors are, what the income level is, and what type of housing they might need, so that we can, are supplying what they will need in our township?
Wasn't, wasn't that data, some data that Mishda was compiling for us? I'm not sure that we, we got the final report, but Mishda was working on compiling some statistics.
Pacific Two Canton Township Housing.
Okay.
Let me see if they've completed it, if we have it. If not, we can follow up, try to get ahold of it. And then SEMCOG, too, has a lot of data as well.
I know. I was just reading about a county in southeastern counties in Ohio, because of the same issue, what they started doing is they put a millage on the ballot so that people could stay in their homes. And they've been passing with 70, 80%, because people know eventually they're going to be of age, they won't be able to afford to go into a facility. And what happens is the county supplies people to come into their homes and assist them with shopping, or, you know, prescription drugs, doctor appointments, rather than having to find a facility for them, which they couldn't afford. So it was an interesting model. Okay, thank you.
Other comments, agenda items, calendar items?
Asked. What we do?
Confess, we're still racking up the numbers. I can tell you, from a financial perspective, we believe we've had one of the best years ever from a public safety. Absolutely amazing how minimal the issues were for public safety. It was a very quiet, peaceful, nice weekend. But staff is, all the departments that were impacted, which includes just about everybody, MSD support, public safety, leisure services, they're racking up the overtime and going to make a presentation to the board in the very near future on how we did overall. But at the surface, it looked like a fantastic event. Go ahead, Michael.
Next week, June 2, if you come to the Canton Public Library at 10:30, you get to hear me talk about the reallocation and the precinct realignment that was conducted in Canton Township this year. We ended up eliminating three precincts and creating one additional precinct, and we changed around some polling locations. So, one, voters, make sure you go on to the township website to double-check, make sure that you are headed to the right location in August, August 7, when you vote. Additionally, if you come to, next Monday, you get to hear me go into great detail about the targets and the mathematics behind.
It's 10:30 AM?
10:30 AM, so it'll wake you up.
Coffee. Bring your own coffee? You're going to have coffee supplied.
I will bring some Tim Horton's coffee.
Nice.
Donuts, if you come, John. I'll bring donuts. No, but it should be some exciting stuff, so you'll get a good idea on kind of what the goals were behind the project and, and all that good stuff.
Other roads forum tomorrow?
The roads forum from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the summit.
That means there will only be one remaining roads forum by the time people see this video. So if you have questions, or concerns, or comments, or are looking for information, there will be one remaining forum.
Staff, any additional comments? Very good. Call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
In favor, state aye.
Aye.
We are closed. Thank you. Good night. Be safe.